Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Um, first thing on the agenda with the American flag.
What's your leaders sort of what I of the United States of America?
Okay, next thing on the agenda, public input if we have any, do we have a public input? All right, um, we got correspondence here. First of all, have to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Right, there's no correspondence, so.
There is no correspondence.
It's not, you'll have to make a motion to add approval of the minute. I don't know, it's on here. Oh, it's under the voting. Connect me out.
Yeah, well, we'll get approval of the minutes right now. So if everyone has a chance to read the minutes from the meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, if I have a, gotta shut this thing off. Um, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion.
And one's in there, so you have the second.
Yeah, so I'll second it. All, all approved, say aye.
Aye.
Well, and opposed, say nay. Okay.
And Ken, you're gonna abstain, right? Because you were not at that meeting? You're muted.
His voice is not on. Your voice is not on.
I've spent a million dollars, that guy's in Florida.
Yeah.
He is, he is.
Put a flamingo behind him.
We in business?
Yeah, we're in business, we can hear you. You can hear us, okay?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so good.
We're still clear.
All right, so we have you as an abstention because you were not at the last meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, I guess we have to have voting of officers for two thousand twenty-four. So what I'll do is open it up.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to retain Ed as chairman of insurance and pension.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll accept it, so I'm.
You have a second?
That second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, all right, then we have to have a vice chairman, I believe. If anyone want to be a vice chairman?
Ken's not saying it.
Yeah, it's almost like he can't hear us.
He just doesn't want to be vice chairman.
Or he swallowed a candy.
No, no, I'm actually, I, I can't hear you now. How convenient is that?
Uh, hi, James, just to let you know where we're at, we just voted on chair. Uh, Ed was re-voted and as chairman, we're looking for a vice chairman for the committee.
So someone interested in being vice chairman is gonna back me up.
Yeah, unless Ken or James wants it.
Yeah, you know, normally I would, but I'm probably on a short, a short window. I'm gonna probably be relocating to, to Florida over the next couple of months. So I, I, I probably will be in the resignation category in another forty-five to sixty days.
Okay. All righty.
And I, I will absolutely defer to the expert, so by all means, Bob, all yours.
Yeah, okay, so I, I. Anyway, back here, the vice chairman?
Hi, so is that a official nomination, James?
Yeah, I'll make that a nomination, yes.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, aye, all in favor, aye.
You didn't want to vote against that one?
All, all. Any opposed? No opposed, okay. Carrie's, I don't think that's at the officers, I don't think there are any other officers.
Right.
Okay, and we did the meetings already, so we got the actuarial report.
So we have Paul.
Oh, we got Paul coming on, good. Paul?
Still connecting audio. All right, should be able to hear you now.
Yeah. But I'll get started with the performance report. Um, and like normal, we'll kind of go through the employee. And, uh, you know, the police and the LoSAP have the same asset allocation. Um, so we'll kind of spend all of our time on the first report. And, uh, kind of leave it at that, so, uh, two thousand twenty-three, um, you know, had a, had a real surprise there towards the end, and uh, I think consensus is that, you know, you hear this word soft landing. Um, you know, the, the Federal Reserve, I guess time will tell. Uh, but typically, when you go from zero and raise rates, uh, you know, five hundred basis points, including three consecutive seventy-five uh, basis point clips. You know, the destruction that, 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 or the expectation of the destruction that that would have caused to uh, the economy in a number of different ways, whether it be labor, whether it be, um, you know, really creating a, a recession. And, um, all indications are, and particularly, you know, the surge that we had in, in late twenty twenty-three, uh, that lo and behold, twenty twenty-three was a, uh, was, was really a solid year for returns. Uh, our plan, uh, was up thirteen point two-three percent. That's a dollar gain of four point six million, uh, with the town account. Um, net contributions withdrawals, it's important to note, uh, that that's supposed to happen. Right, you guys remember from the, uh, meeting with, with Milliman uh, over the last few, few years, that because of the aging population and the frozen plan is that this plan is gonna continue to drain assets, but uh, no one should be, you know, negatively, uh, you know, in- influenced by that, that's how it's supposed to happen. And, uh, net, net, we had, uh, one point three billion out more than what was put in. Um, and that's the way it's gonna work, and this plan is gonna continue to draw down. Uh, you know, unfortunately, participants and beneficiaries are gonna continue to do what humans do, which is, which is to pass. Uh, and eventually, there's gonna be an end to the plan. Um, but really a solid year overall. And, uh, you know, if I asked you, you know, in our second quarter meeting or our first quarter meeting, you know, if I, if, if I threw out, uh, you know, a thirteen and a half percent rate of return, I think everyone would have jumped on it. And, uh, that is what came in. Uh, breaking out the different assets, our stocks were up twenty-two on, on page five. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, the equity. And we have a diverse equity, uh, management. Um, you know, with international emerging market, uh, large cap, mid-cap, small cap, and, um, so, you know, it isn't just the magnificent seven, uh, which, you know, really dominated returns. Using our diversified portfolio, we still pulled off a twenty-two point two-one percent return in equities. Um, followed by a heck of a return in fixed income, a fi- over a five percent rate of return, five point oh-seven, top of page five. Um, we lastly have a ten percent allocation in alts, uh, which delivered a sixteen and a half percent rate of return. So I would say that, uh, you know, twenty twenty-three, uh, wouldn't it be great if every year looked like this? Uh, but let's go back to twenty twenty-three, how, how many, you know, scary days, scary months, uh, how many, how many times were, uh, you know, investors, whether it be, you know, on public pension plans or on committees or even you individually? Um, and, you know, twenty twenty-three certainly has some, some life lessons, and the life lessons are, um, we were talking before the meeting started, you know, one out of three days, the market is lower. One out of three days, it's go- it's going to be lower. So if one out of three days, one out of three months, one out of three quarters, one out of three years, right? It, the key to having, uh, long-term rates of return is focusing on the long haul. Reminding ourselves the life of this plan and viewing those downturns as an opportunity. An opportunity to make money, whether it be by buying or an opportunity to make money by not selling. Uh, and, you know, twenty twenty-three ended up being a solid year. Uh, before I get into, I pause here for a second and talk about the twenty twenty-four outlook by Morgan Stanley. Um, you are probably aware that we are now, uh, in a rate cut potential cycle. Um, inflation was eleven, now it's three. So now all of the talk, uh, from the Fed is about rate cuts. And I can prove it to you, uh, the market is pricing in rate cuts. Um, we follow things like the CD market daily. So, you know, Morgan Stanley is the biggest issuer of, of FDIC insured CDs in the country. Um, we have six-month CDs paying five point five. And if you stay, you know, in that six-month timeframe, you can get over five percent all day long. But what happens to CD rates when you go twelve months? Uh, more like four point seven? How about when you go sixteen months, more like four point five, and when you go out two years? Uh, so when you see the, the decline and it hasn't necessarily, uh, carried over into the treasury market, but the market is telling us rate cuts are coming. Um, let me remind you, twenty twenty-two was the worst year in the history of the bond market. So bonds don't like two things, right? The two things bonds dislike the most, inflation and interest rate hikes. If this year, um, you know, the, the market is pricing in a hundred and twenty basis points of rate cuts, that seems ambitious. The Fed is kind of hinting towards fifty basis points perhaps. Um, but whether we get fifty or whether we get one twenty, whether we don't get any rate cuts, right? Um, the bond market is positioned to have a, 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 a double-digit year this year. Um, yields are there, right? So yields are there in the short-term treasury market north of five. Uh, you know, the intermediate high-quality strategy that we use, uh, outside of BlackRock within this pension plan, the yields there are, are between seven and eight percent. Um, you know, buying municipal bonds in the secondary. Uh, I, I, I just, you know, the taxable equivalent yield right now, if you're in the highest bracket, is eight and a half, nine percent for municipal bonds. Um, so our outlook for twenty twenty-four and, and fixed income, similar to twenty-three, looks really, really rosy. Um, and again, what's gonna impact, uh, bond prices are inflation. So do you think we're gonna have unexpected surprise resurgence of inflation? We certainly could in energy, um, with everything going on in the Red Sea and, you know, global energy prices. Uh, with consumer durables and, you know, the, there is gonna, there is a slowdown, and the slowdown on the good side of the economy looks to continue. Um, the surge of the, the, the service side of the economy, hotels, rent cars, there seems to be no end in sight of, you know, so the, the end of COVID and, and people willing to get out there and spend. Um, obviously, you know, having a job and the continuation of inflation and the, you know, the fit, the, the, the financial solidness of, of the average family is gonna have an impact there. Uh, but the twenty twenty-four outlook for fixed income looks, looks tremendous. I would say that, um, the outlook for equities, we think, Morgan Stanley, we want to avoid the magnificent, magnificent seven at all costs, right? So you guys have probably read, uh, seven or eight stocks, uh, have just been eighty-five percent of the return of the S and P five hundred. And that large-cap stocks, S and P five hundred type is over-owned. Uh, but things like mid-cap and small-cap are clearly under-owned. And we see the broadening out of returns and that, you know, the, probably the number, the best performing sector in twenty twenty-four, if I was a betting man, wouldn't be the S and P five hundred this year. It would be value, it would be mid-cap, it would be small-cap, it would be all these under-owned uh, assets that are really, uh, more focused on the performance of the United States rather than the globe as a whole. And so, uh, putting that in, we, you know, we, we achieved S and P-like, S and P five hundred return. Okay, owning mid-cap, small-cap, emerging market and internet, owning all those assets that were under performing relative to the S and P five hundred and under-owned, uh, relative to the S and P five hundred. So, you know, keeping the, uh, sort of hands on the steering wheel to the asset allocation, I think the twenty twenty-four outlook on the equity side looks, you know, looks solid, no. The obvious things that could disrupt that are, are, are the not fun things to talk about in life, but there's, uh, I would say number one being the geopolitical risk and, uh, you know, what's gonna happen, uh, you know, with, with, with the Houthi and, and Iran and all the, these global issues, obviously. Uh, you know, as the wars or war, um, heading into an election cycle, I mean, there's plenty of things uh, to worry about, there always is, that'll never change, but, uh, I would expect that the, uh, the returns in twenty twenty-four um, are gonna, are, are gonna be, uh, are gonna be solid.
My question, I've, I've been reading a lot about REITs, uh, particularly commercial REITs, probably gonna have the tough twelve to fifteen months.
Only seven percent of that benchmark is in commercial real estate.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, so real estate's a big word, global real estate's a big word. And there's certainly a lot of refinancing expectations to the downside as these Class B offices. That's not what this is, and, and in fact, the largest piece of it is residential property, which is good. Yep, yep, so it's a big word, hospitals, nursing homes, uh, you, you know, so, uh, certainly there's, um, to Ed's point with, uh, although, 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 look, thirty-year mortgage, this, you know, is down to six percent fix this morning. I mean, that's a lot prettier than, you know, about to go over eighty. Um, and that, you know, the, the refinancing of these properties is not necessarily the regional banks, it's the regional banks and Wall Street. And so the Blackstones, uh, you know, the KKRs, you know, you got private equity funds licking their chops, ready, ready to come in. Um, it's, it's something that does come up, though, uh, however.
Yeah, there is gonna be a sector that is gonna go first.
Yep.
But we have very little exposure to it, so.
Um, on page six, uh, asset allocation, right? So, um, the investment policy statement, uh, which, um, we have, which is being overlooked, by the way, by outside third-party Clearwater Analytics, so that our investment policy statement and the portfolio are, are consistently aligned. Um, you know, as money comes in and money goes out in this plan, you know, a million, two went out more than what was, came in, but just, you know, through the work of Morgan Stanley and my team, that we're consistently readjusting the asset allocation so that it, it stays within the, uh, investment policy statement. Also making sure that there's liquidity, because, you know, the town plan cranks out uh, significant mon- monthly money to, um, forgive me, I don't have the number.
Distribution.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's significant. Um, and we, we're, we're constantly managing to make sure that the money is there.
Well, it's over a hundred thousand.
Oh, it's well over a hundred, that's dollars, but we'll say it's three hundred thousand.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, our asset allocation, I'm comfortable with, you know, heading into the second quarter uh, of this year. Uh, page seven, we have great opportunity continuing to move from the treasuries out into the, wouldn't say the risk curve, but we, we have a lot of very short, um, you know, treasuries that are maturing, and if you actually jump to page eight, you get a real good picture. Uh, this page eight's gonna look a lot different two years from now in that we're pushing out as these maturities happen. Um, consistently, we're going from ultra-short, ultra-shape, ultra-short, ultra-safe treasuries out into intermediate duration, high-quality investment-grade fixed income. So taking money, instead of loaning money to the treasury in six months, we're loaning money to McDonald's over six years. And that intermediate strategy, we kind of dodged a bullet, uh, not being there in two thousand and nine. Uh, cause that, well, that, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-two.
Right.
Uh, you know, because it, it was painful to see, uh, you know, what happened to the value of those bonds. Although, as we all know, hold a bond to maturity, guess what? You get, you get all your money back, no different than a CD, but they do trade. And you saw unprecedented volatility within fixed income, uh, over the last couple of years. So I, I've never, you know, twenty-seven years in, in the business. I, if I was in this business for eighty-seven years, I, it was the first time we've ever seen that type of volatility uh, in fixed income, so we're gonna continue to move out into the intermediate curve, and instead of lending money to treasury, lending money to investment-grade, uh, entities, so that's gonna look a lot different.
You're, you're talking about the triple B, basically.
Yep, triple B and above, yep, yep. Um.
And they do get marked to market, so.
Yep.
You do see that fluctuation.
You do, yeah.
If you hold them, you should be okay.
That's right. Unless there's default, and let's talk about default. Uh, two thousand and eight, where the country went back, where, you know, was on the verge of bankruptcy. You know, the ag was up eight point eight percent. Um, historically, municipal bonds, uh, one-tenth of one percent defaults, those are known as junk bonds. You know, municipals that are building, you know, airports in Alaska and nursing homes in New Mexico, you know, those triple C, double C, single C. And in the great financial crisis, uh, the, you know, the ag was up over eight percent, and voila, one-tenth of one percent defaulted in the municipal bond market. And so, uh, again, these things survived, oh, eh, the great financial crisis, they actually thrived in it. Uh, so, you know, a- and again, this is, this is public, this is taxpayer, this is long-term, you know, investment committee-type money, so, you know, reacting to the ebbs and flows of the day-to-day market is, is something that we're, we're not gonna do. Page nine, on the equity side, you can see that we're sixty-three percent United States, uh, we have active management and indexing, uh, uh, side by side. You know, international markets, um, you know, people get scared of international markets because of the war, um, and then I point out that, you know, most international markets did better than we did. Um, and that, you know, it's a big world out there. Um, and even the United States, you know, the, it's kind of become a global customer base. If you're a large-cap company, you have customers all over the world. Uh, i- i- you know, if you're a, if you're a company that sells all over the world, or, you know, you may be domestically corporate headquarters in the United States, but the, the, the world is your customer base. Um, you probably, I don't know if you saw, there was recent data of, uh, you know, the, 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 the killing of women in, in China and Japan of, of, of the demographics of now that there's ridiculously more males than females and, so, um, you know, the, the, the growing, uh, of the, of the consumer isn't necessarily from the mature company, uh, countries like China, Japan, United States. It's from the emerging nations where, uh, there is, you know, population growth at the youth level. Uh, you know, future customers of diapers and toothpaste and shaving.
Japan has been going through a ten-year cycle of no growth.
Right.
Population.
So in summary, um, you know, twenty twenty-three, uh, ended up being really a solid year for us. Um, I feel comfortable heading into the next quarter with the existing asset allocation. Uh, you know, at the manager level, that's, Morgan Stanley, uh, my firm, each of those managers are scrubbed, uh, every quarter, and they, we make sure that they're the, uh, top quintile. We make sure that they're, uh, you know, exceeding the benchmark, um, you know, over long periods of time and, you know, with that fiduciary process of, you know, making sure all those managers are within FS, which, you know, when Morgan Stanley will stamp their approval as a fiduciary, um, that, uh, you know, I feel really good about the manager selection that we have at this point, uh, heading into, uh, heading into the rest of twenty twenty-four. That is my performance update.
Okay, how's our ratio right now? So.
We looked at it in the November meeting, I don't remember.
Three.
Yeah.
Within the eighties, I think.
Yeah, solid, solid. You might, you might remember in, uh, two thousand and eight, we're in the forties.
Oh, yeah.
As, as was a lot of the towns around us, so, you know, being in the, whether it's eighty-one or eighty-nine, um, you know, the, the, both of the plans are, are extremely healthy, so.
No, one thing we were working about in two thousand and eight, uh, we didn't have a big downfall then, we had, you know, correct, a good balance in between.
Negative eight.
Yeah, we're negative eight.
Yeah, which is nothing.
S and P was earning fifty-one, yeah.
Yeah.
Some towns, some towns had Bernie Madoff as the name.
Yeah.
Two of them were your neighbors. And you see, you've seen negative eight, the next year, we came right back.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Uh, that's why you don't want to get too far out, like some towns.
The asset allocation, does that come up again for Vant's sign or?
Yeah, so the, uh, IPS, it's a good, it's a good, and it was in that, in the, in the attachments, um, so it's, i- i- best practice when we have the new selectman sign. And that, that IPS has been dragged through this commission for twenty years. And it's, you know, with IPS, and again, there's outside independent Clearwater analy- analytics on a daily basis, make sure that there's no mismatch. I get emails when there's, some of our international stocks will have, you know, i- it's a teeny, teeny, teeny amount, and, and we, we have to fix it. Um, um, that the best practices would be to have that signed, uh, and it's, the, the key, the key to investment policy statements is sort of wide open, a big net, generic, I mean, the, 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 twenty years ago, you wanna, people, committees want to have it so specific that you're in violation every three weeks.
Yeah.
And so if you want, it, it needs to be intelligent and designed to be effective. And if we ever, as a commission, ever, that we have, remember, we added ten percent to all terms, so as we change that, we need to, again, update the, the IPS.
And I noticed on the police one, we're not gonna cover that in detail. We had seven point four.
That's a quarter.
A quarter and thirteen point oh-one on the year.
Yeah.
Which again is, is very good.
They, they, they're gonna be step and step, the difference is.
Pretty much in line with the town side, too.
Yeah, it's the same. It shouldn't be basis points. The, the Y's not exactly the same, it's two separate plans, and then there's, you know, the timeliness of distributions and contributions.
Right. But unlike the town plan, the police plan and the building one.
Yep.
Because they're contributing on both sides.
Yeah, to the tune of, yeah, there was two or thirteen thousand, it, more in contributions than without.
And that's a continuing plan.
Yep.
And then the fireman one, the small one, that'll be.
Yeah, that's not a pension, right?
It's not really a pension.
Yeah.
But still, it's money there, and it will be, uh, uh, are we contributing to that anymore?
We have LoSAP too, because the, um, there's been plenty of months in there.
Oh, yeah.
And obviously, we've had some good growth years in it too, but like.
But that's good.
Um, there's not a lot of drawdown.
And it's not a pension, that's the other thing, because it's, it's a reward.
But then there's a cap one, too.
The pool is capped, yeah, and how much they can get, it's like three hundred bucks a month. Um, and there's a defined list on it, so that's, yeah, that's a closed.
The value hasn't changed that much.
No.
Really? Seven, eight years.
Well, yeah, uh, we're about to send out, I think we sent out give me, I don't know, I should have these numbers memorized, but there, there's substantial money that have taken out over the last ten years. And yet the values stay the same.
Well, because you have the earnings.
Yeah.
Well, for the net contributions for the last year was thirteen thousand, I mean, you put anything in, so the drawdown, I don't know, but thirteen.
Yeah, so that, what you're seeing there is we have the cash account and the portfolio account, and that, that's why you see that, so there, there was no contribution that, that, that's truly a zero number. That's truly a zero number.
Yeah, it grew by sixty-six on the investment side, so.
Yep.
Um.
And that, that's around what we send out.
Yeah.
So that's pretty stable.
The um. Cause they got a draft of the six-thirty audit um today, so the town was eighty-four point nine, the police is seventy-six point five. Uh so.
Good.
Yeah.
Good, and that plan, I'd say, well, eventually pays out too over a long period of time, because you gotta cap the audience.
Which one?
The, the, the fire.
Yeah, the fireman, that plan is locked in, the, the people eligible for it are locked in, so. Um.
And any new volunteers don't get it.
Um so. More than likely, at some point, some members of this committee will be talking about what to do with the rest of the money in the low.
Yeah, down the road.
Yeah, but again, with. The other ones are funded well, the money was set aside for that, it's kind of a leave alone until you kind of have to deal, right? So, and that's all because of all the cleanup that was done like that a lot of years ago.
That was a nightmare.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I remember that, that, that was a nightmare. Uh each firehouse had a separate type of plan of a separate rate, and it had all been drawn together. And then there were records that were all over the place and incomplete and, and other things that, well, we don't have to react. But anyway, it got straightened up.
Yeah.
And um, and as far as the newer employees that go, have been hired in town the last, I think, three, four years now, they've been getting the um.
Defined contribution.
Defined contribution.
It's like six, seven years now.
It's been that long?
I think twenty sixteen was the first union that switched around that, I think, right?
It's gotta be that, I mean, I'm gone two years, you know, and it was around a good four, five, five years, it's gotta be around seven.
Yeah.
So it's been that long.
Yeah, like I, like I said, I think the first union that. The new hires didn't have it, it was back in twenty sixteen, which is crazy that that's eight years ago.
Yeah.
It's like June, so it's like seven and a half, but it's.
And in that one, we got good participation, the, the town puts in a percentage.
Yep.
And then the employees can match it or do what they want.
Yeah, so each union has for the defined contribution, um you're either at six percent or seven percent. And the town, they, we've been kind of sticklers that um. That the employee puts in just as much as the town. We just wanted an active participation there, but we, when we switched to that, initially it was the five and five. Some unions are up to six now, and I think one or two, I think only one right now is at seven. But we've been actively changing that over time. Um because I think everybody in this room would know, and everybody in line goes. Putting five, six percent, even seven percent of your pay away, if that's all you're doing even with the town match. It's not enough to retire.
No, no.
You know, even assuming social security still exists.
Yeah. But assuming social security, assuming that, still a little too focused right now, I don't know, for most people.
Um I do have one of the, if we're not, if we're done with that, the uh statement of investment policy. Um that I know Dan has to sign it, I would like the board to make a motion, second and vote on. To make no changes to it, just because I know the first question out of Dan's mouth is gonna be, did insurance and pension sign off on it?
Correct.
And I think in the minutes, we should have in there that.
Now, before I make that motion, uh, uh would, you recommend any changes at this point?
No, no, I'm very comfortable with it.
Okay, everyone's going the same way. Okay, then I make a motion that we uh approve the policy statement as it now exists, uh do I have a second on that?
I'll do the second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so fast.
Thank you, I, I, I know Dan will just attach the minutes to it, we might put it there on Dan and just, you know, so.
No, I don't see making any changes to a document like that unless something comes up. You know, unless we see another investment platform or, or something that we would wanna do. And we don't go into options or things like that, or do we ever want to, from what I can see. So, okay, the uh, the last one is review of town liability insurance, I wanted to put that on it. Because the last meeting, I think we kind of missed it, and we should have it on our agenda, uh because things do happen in that area.
Yeah, so um knock on wood, everything's been pretty, pretty good, we had a while back, the boiler in the basement. Um boiler in the basement wasn't set up right when we put in the management, the company that came in and put in the management of it. At some point, the boiler wasn't set up right, then there was a power surge, made the transformer blow. And one of the two boilers here. Um ran and ran and ran and the shut-off never worked, so it cooked some of it. Um insurance covered it, other than our deductible, it's been since replaced, uh fixed. Um and they are going after the company that did the work to it. Uh I'll get an update from Kerma Insurance Carrying on it, see where that is, but either way. It's covered by insurance, so we weren't out of pocket other than deductible. But if they find, if they could get the other carriers' insurance to agree to it, we'll get some of that money back.
Good.
Um.
But that's up to the two companies, uh.
Yeah.
Researching and fighting it out, that type of stuff, but we're not at fault, so there doesn't seem to be any problem, huh?
No, but even if we are, it would be, still be covered by insurance.
It's just that our rates could be affected in that year.
Correct. Um the other thing with the liability, the. Kerma's working on getting updated rates for workers' comp and lap for the next budget season. This is the last year that we have a guaranteed cap for the liability piece at three percent. Um so we're waiting on that.
Yeah, what does it look like when you compare it to other towns and everything? Does it look like the history is they might take a big jump in the years ahead, or is it hard?
Um it's hard to say, this is the first year, so fiscally year twenty-four. We, since we've been eligible through Kerma that we're not getting a revenue sharing piece. Um the reason I was told, even though they didn't lose money Kerma, they didn't make as much as usual. There was a fire at a local high school on a roof. Um just over a year ago, a year and a half ago, and they have Kerma. And Kerma took a pretty good hit on that when that happened, so that effect, cause you're pooled.
Right.
They didn't make as much, or they didn't have as much at the end of the year to send out, the last couple of years has been sixty, seventy grand. Um and that's a revenue item for us in the budget. There's been other things that have come in to make up for it, the fact that we're not getting it, um but just making you aware of it, that it's the first year, we've always got. Um every social.
Sure, there's budget projection on that.
Yeah, but the state sent us way more money than they told us they were going to, so we're good.
Yeah.
Um but, you know, that was.
But planning out for the future, we still put that in there.
Yeah.
Still have.
That'll be in the. Cause we have gotten it every year since we've been eligible, some years it's like thirty, but lately it's been fifty, sixty, seventy. Um.
So other than the boiler, there wasn't anything major that we had.
We haven't had.
I mean, you get the old, the little flames throughout the year, so, you know, that stuff, yeah.
Uh but that's the only big thing, and that was, I think the payout on it was like sixty, so like. A big deal, but not half a million.
There's still, their premiums, the premiums we pay is a lot higher than what they paid out, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they carry a lot of stopgap insurance, it's not like that too, so.
And as far as our injury history goes, we're in good shape, we have the glasses, we have people wearing the bat braces and all that.
Yeah, so the, on the count side, um our premium's actually gone down the last couple of years. Um so it's because we've done a lot, we've had good experiences, um.
The crew is uh younger, so to speak.
That's part of it too, is um some of our workforce is getting younger. Um and you have less comp, and we've had a couple of people that were bigger comp people retire.
Hmm.
Um so. Um knock on wood, that's been trending, we haven't had a ton of injuries that pay lately either, so. You know, unfortunately with comp and liability, all it takes is one big claim.
And legal.
Yeah, so.
The other thing is, I'm not sure if that's part of the liability, but we uh have the solar panels um and all that.
Yeah.
And is that, that's still performing pretty well as far as income goes, I know they degrade over a period of time.
Yeah, the, I am not a fan of the solar, because it's very hard to track. How much savings you have, what it pays, you got. Each solar's, every time we've done solar, the, the two times really, in the school complex. Was done one way, the solar farm is done a different way. Um it's a pain for tracking, insurance-wise, it's been not really an issue, but it's. Yeah, this goes back, like, we, we'd always look at it, what do we get from it, and you don't get a great answer.
Yeah.
And so much of it, of what you get is dictated by, not necessarily what's happening here, it's. What was the rate set at, the Z rec set at, and that's based on the whole state and what are you capped at and so.
Rather complicated.
Very complicated, if you ever wanna learn more about it, um reach out to Bill Craddy and you will understand half of it.
That guy rattles his stuff off like it's nothing.
And I think.
Specialty area.
We meet with him and we go, I understood half of that, Billy, but you understand all of it?
But there is a finite uh, uh limit to uh the, the infrastructure.
Yeah.
There's like twenty years or twenty-five years.
Twenty, twenty-five years, it still has some life left, but that's, I think they base it on a twenty to twenty-five year range. But it does that great. A percent every year, whatever percentage each year.
And once it gets down to where you have to replace it, then you got a decision, do you make that investment all over again to replace it? And what's the thing going on, what's the efficiency of the panel?
And depending how it was originally set up.
Correct.
I think one of them, at the end of the twenty years, we own it, the other one, we don't own them, and then you have to pay to have somebody come take them away, or do you come up with a new one? The, since we're going down that, the latest thing that they allow now is you can rent. Instead of you paying for the solar and stuff, a company comes in and rents space on your roof.
Yeah, I've heard of that.
And they do that.
I know a company that does it.
Yeah, and to me, as a conservative finance guy, even if you get less money, but you know exactly how much money you're gonna get.
And you're not investing.
Yeah, to me, that just makes so much more sense, I'd rather take less of a return on it and go. All right, you're gonna pay us fifty grand a year? And maybe I would have gotten seventy-five thousand dollars in savings if I did it the other way, or I could get twenty. You know, give me the fifty all day long, because I could budget for that.
Yeah, plus the fact that you don't own.
Yeah.
And then all the other things.
Yeah, let somebody else take the life, how about fuel, right back to insurance?
Fuel, fuel thermal.
We haven't really looked at any of it, um.
Cause I know that's a big thing coming up on renewables and all that, too, and there are companies that specialize in that for commercials and uh.
Yeah.
And uh, uh what do you call it, government.
Yeah, I know, um we used to have the Energy Commission, Town or Committee, now it's Sustainable Baffle. So they're kind of tasked with looking at all that stuff.
Introduce.
Yeah, so I don't know how much they've gone to that, but I know, again, Bill Craddy wanted to put a fuel cell into. Um the school complex at some point, I think they still want to, but yeah, it's gotta make sense financially.
Yeah.
So.
Alrighty, I think that, that's about it, anything else? All right, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, uh do I have a second?
A second.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone, and if it is, is your last meeting, Ken, thank you very much for serving.
Well, I appreciate that, um it's, the jury's out whether I'll be replaced before the April meeting or not, so. Um I will certainly let you know as soon as I find out.